Good evening, everybody. I'd like to open the Town of Air Select Board meeting for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. This meeting slash hearing of the Air Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided, as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-9080-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about the remote participation, please contact Carly Antonakis, Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. Could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes or amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Members of the Board, just under the Town Manager's report, if I could add an amendment for appointments, an appointment to the Rate Review Committee and a modification to the 71 Sandy Pond Working Group.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have nothing, so I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. The Chair has approved. The only announcement for this evening is a reminder that this Saturday is the Newton Street Festival. It'll be Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with the rain day of Sunday at the same times. And I'll hand it over to Janice for a moment of silence.
So, Mr. Chair, as we sadly know, on September 5th, 2024, former Select Board member Frank Maxson passed away. I first met Frank when I first ran for this seat. It was his seat that I ended up, I ran against him. And I must say that when I first, you know, got into it, I thought, oh, is this going to be how nasty it can be on TV? You know? And it was not. He was very pleasant, you know, and when he ended up not getting reelected and I got his seat, he was ever so kind and said that, you know, he was at least pleased that I got it, which I thought was very, very nice of him. Over the years, we'd end up at the same meeting together and I'd end up getting him a ride home. I never knew how we got to the meeting, you know? Dropping him off, I know one time we had a meeting, we were meeting up at the old J-Boss in Shirley, and I know we had taken the train, but, you know, most of the time I was like, who's dropping you off and not giving you the ride home? And he had a long illustrious career within this town, and we could be here all day talking about it, but what I do want to say is that he and I did not agree on a lot of things. But he was always pleasant. And I will, and I always appreciated that, that we could politely disagree. And I think that that's something that needs to be remembered, that those days, you know, when we could politely disagree. And I'll kind of miss running into him and end up giving him a ride home. So, again, Frank, thank you for your service to this town, to your service to this country. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have a moment of silence.
Thank you. Is there anybody here for public input or anybody online? Pauline?
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to piggyback on what Janice said about Frank. Thank you for your kind, kind words, Janice. It's hard for me.
Don't you cry!
It was my friend. But I want everyone hearing this to know, if Frank loved anything, he loved the Town of Air. And I hope we are all remembered for that when it is our time. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Pauline. Anybody else for public input? Okay. We'll move on to recognition of the Air Police Department personnel for a missing child case. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. So I just wanted to make sure that the Board recognized some outstanding work that members of our police department had earlier in September. On September 9th, we got a very distressing call, one that, as parents, we can all kind of agree that this is kind of like your worst nightmare call, worst nightmare, that your child escaped from your residence, opened up the front door, and you last saw them running into the woods in just a diaper. And then the quick search by the neighbors and the family couldn't find the kid. So they called us. So our day shift went down, led by Sergeant Derek Pearson, and also followed by Detective Brent Davis, Officer Alexia Serprenot, and our newest officer Connor Murphy went down. Sergeant Pearson spearheaded the search and did it textbook. You start right from the, you know, the immediate area, and then you work out in a systematic way. When myself and the deputy got there, the sergeant had all the wheels in motion, set up a very impromptu command post, and started briefing myself and the deputy in where we're at and where our manpower was out there searching. We were just beyond the 20-minute mark, which, if you're missing your kid 20 minutes, is an eternity. And we were, we had just started putting everything into place of all the things that we needed to do. Our drone was ready to go up in the air, the air wing was going to be on standby, and we were calling in our assets from NIMLEC to help search. As soon as we were just about to key the mic to have dispatch make all those calls, Detective Davis just radioed out, it was a quick thing that we all wanted to repeat, was like, I got him. And we were trying to get, you know, get confirmation on that. We got confirmation, and shortly after that, we saw Detective Davis walking out of the woods, carrying, carrying the three-year-old boy in a diaper and back to his parents. I can't tell you how proud I was of those officers that day to return a child to their parent, who was unbelievably upset but extremely happy when we turned over the kid. And Detective Davis was not just happy with just bringing the kid out of the woods, he wanted to personally hand the kid to the mother. And that was done. So I issued, we put it out on social media, we put it, you know, I gave, you know, gave them kudos in an internal documentation, and I gave them a letter of commendation. And so I just wanted the Board to make sure that they knew that this letter of commendation was going out to everybody, and the outstanding work that we do every day, but on this day was, it was absolutely exceptional.
Thank you.
This is awesome.
Yeah. To see the look on, I mean, my face was probably just like, ah, you know, is just, you know, because it's, wasn't my kid, but I have kids, and I know what that feeling, that mother must have been feeling. But it was, it was an absolute proud moment that I had, that those officers were able to do that. So, I don't know if any of them, they've been working doubles in here. They're all taking some downtime, but the, normally, I would have, if they were here, I would have issued in their citation here, which I normally do in December. But this is the picture of Brent walking out of the, oops, did we have that? There's a picture of Brent walking out of the, and the other officers walking out of the woods, carrying the child. We did call in the fire department to assess, you know, the child for any injuries, just some minor scrapes, and released back to the mother. So, yeah, great, great moment in Air PD history. Sad thing is, I won't be able to give this to Brent, Detective Davis, because he's going to be no longer with us later on this month. He's moving in, moving down to a different area of the country, and he resigned his position. So I was hoping to give him a citation today, but we'll make it special there. But it's, it's still a great moment, and he went out with it on a great job.
On a high point.
On a very high point, yeah.
Exactly.
So, with that, I don't want to take up any more time, I just wanted to make sure the Board knew this, this great call.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate you coming and telling this story, because you know better than all of us that, you know, anything involving the police is difficult, and a lot of people, you know, are going to highlight the negative, highlight the negative, and this is a big positive.
Absolutely.
And it should go out, you know, Air Police is the best, and, you know, I love hearing these, these stories, and, yeah, like you said, it's a big success, and everyone should know.
And I'm glad to tell any stories, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Next up is interviews and appointments.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, as you're aware, there is currently a resident vacancy on the Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee. And per the Select Board, we publicly advertised that position, and the town received two interested applicants for that position, Ms. Linda Collins and a Ms. Bonnie Tillitson, and you have their letters of interest in the packet. And so at this point, Mr. Chair, as sort of standard procedure, is the Board would interview each candidate, and then the Board would deliberate and make the appointment by a simple majority vote. And I believe both candidates are here this evening.
Okay. Okay. Do we just want to, Linda?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Linda Collins. Hi. And that's Samantha Lane.
Hello. So what's your interest in the position?
So, I am actually a municipal employee, and I've been a municipal employee for four years, and it's kind of really, I really enjoy my work, and I really want to get more involved with, you know, my, my community and be part of a committee. My previous time and job did not allow for that. So in the past six months, I've had a lot more available time, so I've been looking for something to fill my time, and this is when I've really been looking for different things that I could be involved in. And when I saw Senior Center, I've always been involved with seniors, and that's kind of like my, I've always really enjoyed working with seniors, I know this is a little bit different, but that's what sparked my interest originally. When I went through and started reading all of the, what you're looking for, for, you know, people on the committee, you know, it was right up my alley. Some of just, you know, the, you know, looking, I know you've already decided on a site, it seems, but just the, you know, design and planning, the public outreach, which I do a lot of, and I enjoy doing that. I identify the funding, design and project, I have a lot of experience in that, and again, it's something I'm very interested in. I have a design background, not in structural design, but design in general in different areas. Final design and construction of the project, overseeing and administering budget and for the project, I do a lot of budget tracking analysis. I think I would have some good input or, you know, be a good part of a team. Public updates, that's something I really enjoy. I have a lot of different experience in reaching out from a retail wholesale side and from a public side. I do a lot of that with my current job. We do a lot of public outreach, and we are always trying to find different ways to make it effective. So, and, you know, I've kind of reviewed and watched some of the videos and, you know, what the questions, you know, what the message is, potential deliverances, how to collect, organize, and incorporate input, all things that I think I could be very helpful, and things I've done, and things that I enjoy doing. I'm a good team player, I'm a good listener, and I think I would have some good input and, you know, could be, you know, an important part or, you know, be able to add to different aspects of what the committee is trying to do.
Any questions?
I like the enthusiasm, that's for sure. And according to this, you're, you work in Concord?
I currently work in Concord, yep. I work in Concord, I've been there almost two years, and I worked in Boxborough. And actually, when I worked in Boxborough, they're doing the same thing they were doing, trying to do the whole site and design plan for a fire station, which they still haven't done. I wasn't part of that, but I was exposed to it, and I helped prepare a lot of information. So I know, you know, a lot of what's the process and things they have to look for, and, you know, all the funding, and again, a lot of it was getting it out to the public so they, you know, to get their support. So I'm very familiar with the process, and actually, I really enjoyed that part of it. So, yes, I did that in Boxer, and I currently work in Concord for the Public Works, a large department. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Chris?
Yeah, I think this has summed up. I have your letter here, and, you know, main thing, you have experience dealing with the public.
Yeah, a lot of public experience.
Yeah, because as you know, on any of these committees, it's one of the most important things, is communication and knowing that the whole, you know, it's transparent, you're talking with people all the time, so you're comfortable.
So when I was in Boxborough, I was actually, so, I was in Public Works there as well. So they were doing, so Public Works, we oversaw the fields, so I was, we did a lot of, we actually did the rules and regulations for the fields, which I was a big part of. We, when they were building new fields, we had to present a lot of information on, you know, the revenue that we brought in from fees. So, you know, we had to go be part of a lot of meetings. I did follow all the Select Board meetings there. And then super, I was co-superintendent of the cemetery, so I, we did meetings, a lot of public, you know, so I'm comfortable dealing with the public.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Lynn.
Mouse set?
Yes, yeah.
We have more questions. Thank you.
All right, and Bonnie?
Hi, everyone.
Bonnie Tillitson from 15 Oak Ridge Drive. I know everyone pretty much here. Yeah, so I'm, to follow the same question, yes, I'm very interested in the committee, joining the committee. As you all know, I was a member of the Conservation Commission for a number of years when I first moved here, although I was working at the time. I found it to be very rewarding. I'm a keen sort of environmentalist, so that was sort of right up my alley. Being on the Senior Center, I'm, you know, there's a lot of work to be done. I'm very interested in, actually, I was interested in site selection, I know that's finished now, but there's a lot to be done with respect to environmental oversight and overview, construction, just the building process. I know how to read construction designs, there's a lot of things that I learned being on the Conservation Commission. So I think it's a kind of a nice follow, follow-through, being on the Senior Center Committee. I'm getting older myself, I'm retired now from my job as a research technician in biotech, so I have a lot of time on my hands. And so I'm interested in getting back and, you know, being kind of part of the town again, and being on a committee. So this was sort of right up my alley.
Okay.
And I, and also, just to let you know, you know, I know that the current Senior Center is limited in respect, so, you know, it's, it's going to be like a joy to get the larger Senior Center going and built.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
No, no, she adds things too.
Yeah.
So you add to the conversation also, so. Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you.
I hate when we're in this situation.
I know.
Can we expand the committee?
So, Mr. Chairman, last Friday's Habitat event, the Vice Chair of the Committee, Mr. Diskin, had asked me if I would at least put this bug in the Board's ear, that they have a strong committee, we have this vacancy, there are two really strong candidates, and in his opinion, and it would be up to the Board, that the committee could definitely use an alternate member, as the Board is aware, since the committee has been constituted, it has had very good attendance and involvement, but there's been just this need for, you know, an alternate. So, again, it's the, it's the purview of the Select Board, as it's the committee appointed by you, as to how you want to structure it, but there was an idea floated of having an alternate.
Okay.
And I said I would bring that up.
Yes. I'm glad you did.
Well, I have a quick question through the Chair. What time and date does the committee usually meet?
Through the Chair.
Oh, they're right there, that's right.
We're meeting, right now, we're meeting roughly every other Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. That day may shift, that has been what we've been.
Okay, all right. And to both of the candidates, that time works for both of you? Is it currently is?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I shouldn't mention, so, the second Wednesday of every month, for 10 months out of the year, I have a Public Works Commission meeting that I have to be at, because I'm the one who prepares the pack for the commission, and the director. However, in November, that meeting dates change. My meeting's from 4:00 to 6:00, but I just want to let you know that, so.
Okay.
And I try to watch, look at the schedule, I see that they're not all on Wednesdays, I don't know if they're going to be set on Wednesdays, this committee's meeting, so I, other than that, I'm flexible, and I might have some flexibility with that. If I did it remote at home, it's just, just a way of that.
But that's the current schedule, and it may or may not change.
It may or may not change, we already have one member who it might not work for anymore anyway, so that was on the agenda for tomorrow's meeting to discuss, anyway.
Too bad it wasn't yesterday.
Thoughts? Chris?
Yeah, I mean, it's a great problem to have, right? I mean, you have two enthusiastic, very well-suited people for disposition, or I guess, if we have the alternate as well, positions, you know, you hate to ever turn away anyone that is, is excited to volunteer for the town, so.
I agree. So I guess it would be, I just choose who to put on the committee and who the alternate would be?
Right.
Okay. Thoughts?
Based on what we know right now, I, you know, and based on the, on the schedule, you know, we have one that says it wouldn't be a problem, we have another one who, right now, based on the information that we have at this meeting, there is some conflicts. So, you know, maybe, maybe that would be a good idea to have her as the alternate.
I think that makes sense.
And then, of course, you know, just as a reminder, the alternate can attend all the time, you know, it's not like they can't attend or anything, but, you know, and then when the appointments go to come back, you know, everybody would reapply if they still wanted to be, and then, you know, maybe the alternate would not be the alternate. It would be, you know, a member, and the other member would step down to an alternate or something, so. So that's just based on tonight's conversation, for tonight's information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That makes perfect sense to me.
All right. So, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Are we, do you want it, one big motion or two motions? I'll do two motions. Okay.
Carly says two.
All right, so I'll make a motion that Bonnie Tillitson be the member to, for the expiration date of when? Does anybody know?
There are, and I think it's open-ended.
Oh, it's open-ended? Okay. So, yeah, so I make a motion that Bonnie Tillitson be the regular member.
For the Senior Center.
For the Senior Building, whatever the name is.
Senior selection.
Yeah, okay.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Chair says aye.
And then I'll make a motion that Linda Collins be named as the alternate, and hope that things work out, that in the future, you won't be the alternate, you'll be a regular member.
I will second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Chair says aye.
Thank you both.
Thank you both for your interest.
So, yeah, both bring something.
All right.
It's a painful decision.
I know.
Next.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as the Board is aware, at your last meeting, you authorized the creation of a working group to look at 71 Sandy Pond Road, which was recently acquired by the town. The working group's main task will be to work on developing a proposal for that site. We know that the site has to be used for parks, rec, or open space purposes, and as part of that working group, there are two resident representatives. Again, the Board advertised those opportunities, and we received the following resident interest in that, Ms. Michelle Riggs, Mr. Alex Hack, and all the material is in your packet, Mr. Ed Orr, and Mr. Jacob Salome. And again, similar procedure, the Board would interview candidates and then deliberate and by simple majority, select individuals.
And how many spots is this for?
Two.
Two, okay.
How many days when we couldn't get anyone?
I know.
Is everybody here?
I believe, I believe there are two present, three, I'm sorry, there are three present. Mr. Ed Orr is here, Mr. Alex Hack is here, and then Mr. Jacob Salome is on, on the Zoom platform.
Okay.
The, Ms. Riggs had a meeting at 6:00, she was going to try to get here as fast as she could.
Okay.
But she wasn't sure she was able to make it.
Okay. Mr. Orr, if you want to come down first?
Sure.
Good evening.
Hi.
So if you just want to give us a little bit about what your interest is with this committee?
Well, I don't, can't say that I have much that I could answer, and I know what I read, I know it's across from the Town Beach, and I believe that there are concerns that I might have about where you guys are going to go with that, if it's trying to figure out what you're going to use it for, I guess, is what that. And my concern about everything there is safety. Other than that, I mean, finding a use shouldn't be too big of a deal, but I think safety, because of where it's physically located, would be my prime directive.
Janice and Chris?
Do you have any specific safety concerns, or it's just general?
Well, yeah, I mean, the traffic and the, we, I spend maybe way too much time on forums, and I don't see a lot of fans about the sidewalks and things that have been done for Town Beach about safety, so if this is going to compound it, the, these- about safety, so if this is gonna compound it, these, a lot of trucks go on down that road, and you can bring the speed limit down, but I think the, I don't have any answers, don't have any plan, I, you know, my interest is to be able to efficiently, maybe things that are over here can be done over here, and which would, you know, if that's really gonna be used for, I haven't even heard anything about or read, but if it's gonna be used like overflow parking or something like that, I would have a concern with that, because when kids and families have crossed in that road, no matter what kind of mechanism you put in there, light wise or control, little kids don't know, so. And that's about it, I mean, 'cause I, you know, I've been a program manager in a previous life, and I did that for probably about 10 years, with the, I'll give you the name of the company, 'cause I'd be curious, Schlumberger.
Okay, oh, yeah.
All right.
I even know how to spell it.
I don't wanna quiz you on that, because he doesn't spell it like you.
Yeah, yeah.
Janice, any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Good concern, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Orr.
Yep.
Mr. Hack?
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Interest-wise, honestly, lived here for about four years, just trying to get more involved with the town, haven't been involved too much, decent background in construction myself, nine years, nine years or so, doing six or so of pricing estimating, three or so of project management, so just trying to, you know, use my work knowledge and talent to my ability, and always interested in how I can help the town, and figure out what goes into it, and maybe that'll decide where we're going and what direction to use the space for.
Any specific questions?
Nothing specific, but I hope that you'll continue to look at other stuff to do in the town, too.
Yeah, of course.
You know, not just this one. Yeah, I mean, have you heard anything about, you know, what the site is being discussed for, or?
Like you said, it was more open space, public space, I didn't know it was anything, it was more for mixed use, not so much like a rezoning of anything.
Yeah, no rezoning, yeah, so, okay.
So, like, your desire is to help the town with your experience, more so than interest in this specific?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, figured experience would help.
Yeah, no, that's very commendable.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Salome?
Hello. Hey there, Askel.
Good, how are you?
Thanks for letting me call in here.
Oh, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so same questions, if you could explain just some of your interest in this particular working group or committee?
Yeah, definitely. So, I'm a resident of the Cannon Gate condominiums, which is a 75 Sandy Pond, I'm also on the HOA board for that association, and I'm a member of the PACE group, people who are concerned about the environment, which is sort of going through a transition period right now, so we're not super active on a lot of things, but I think we're gonna be at the Folk Festival this weekend, which will be nice, hopefully get some more recruiting going on there. Anyways, yeah, so I'm basically a local, you know, user of the space, I have a dog that I walk to the dog park all the time, and it's a, you know, pretty much a staple part of our walking route, we go back and forth across those crop spocks all the time, so it's a, you know, it's a very frequent, frequent place by myself, so I'm so invested in how it ends up getting used, I'd be happy to participate as just a, you know, a citizen input as well, but I figure I might as well put my name in the hat for actually being on the, on the committee myself, so, yeah, that's sort of my interest in it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer more.
Any other questions?
No, I don't, I think.
No, I mean, being right in Cannon Gate, obviously, this is kind of right in your backyard, so. You do have.
It sure is, yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything further.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks.
And then, Michelle's not on there, right?
She had put in, it's in the packet.
Yeah.
That she wants to plan the space to be useful, safe, and aesthetically pleasing, so that, you know, she's, she sees it as a potential, that spot, to see as potential to serve the community, so.
Thoughts on the candidates?
I mean, again, great candidates, you know, they're, you have four people for two spots, which is awesome, but as you see, you know, a lot of, even just different boards that have openings right now, so to have four people for two spots is a great thing to have, you know, I think, again, these are all great candidates. It's one of those tipping point kind of things, you know, like, again, for, everyone, I think that was a great question that you asked last, you know, for the last opening, was does anyone see any conflicts, schedule conflicts, where, you know, you might have things going on in life that makes it a little bit more difficult to make meetings?
Yeah, 'cause, just to add on to that, if I, if I could, through the chair, sorry. Yeah, there's no guarantee that the committee would be meeting in the evening or whatever, I mean, that's something that when the committee got together, they would decide on the regular schedule, so, yeah, so. So, that being said, I mean, if the meetings were at 4:00, would there be any conflicts for anybody?
Would you?
You would have a conflict if it was at 4:00?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not saying it would be at 4:00, I was just throwing out a number, so, yeah.
Hey, behind you guys, I'm, I also be, I usually work, you know, 9:00 to 5:00 also, so that's sort of my, my time period, I can definitely, I'm flexible, hybrid days, so I can be home on days that you have a meeting, so I can be, you know, home earlier for sure, and I'll be working from air, you know, from home at Cannon Gate, so, other than that, definitely more of a morning or evening time, unless there's a really important thing that takes time off for, but that's definitely a possibility.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, it's hard, this one, I mean, you're forming the committee, so, you know, you don't have a schedule or anything like that, so everybody's gotta meet, so ironically, they gotta come up with the schedule to that they can all meet together to come up with the schedule, so, so that one, it's just kind of hard to answer, but it was a good question to at least, you know, get a feel for it, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have, you know, any other, you know, besides Mr. Hack, you know, I hate to say, well, you know, you have conflicts, 'cause, you know, we all do, but when you have really great candidates, it's like, okay, what are the small kind of things that, you know, might be, you know, put someone just that small amount over? But, other than that.
Can we have alternates? Robert?
Yeah, as I mentioned before, I mean, that is the prerogative of the board, yeah.
It would become too unwieldy, 'cause I know sometimes when you get, you know, a committee that gets too big, it.
No, I think, because it's a working group, and a lot of it's gonna, it's gonna be a shorter assignment, and it's gonna have a lot of public involvement, you could do an alternate, I believe, if that's what the board would like to do.
That's true, it's a working. So there is no, they're not making a formal decision, they'd be, you know, bringing it forward for the town to make the formal decision, so, yeah, that does work, and that would help, that would help solve, because, you know, to be honest, this working group could say, okay, we can meet on Tuesday at 4:00, it works for everybody, and then the next time they go to meet, they all have to meet on Thursday at 5:00, and there might not be a regular scheduled night, so if there's an alternate, that could help with that situation, too.
Okay. I think that works. Again, I just, it hurts me to, you know, not include everyone that wants to volunteer their time, you know?
So, we can appoint the two members and two alternates, that way.
Okay.
So, does anybody have strong belts on the two members, or the first member?
You know, I guess for me, there's, I'm sorry, I gotta bring up Michelle, is that her name? Obviously, she had a conflict right now, which doesn't disqualify her, but it just shows maybe, you know, that, maybe she could be an alternate, and Mr. Hack be an alternate, so, you know, Mr. Orr and Mr. Salone would be my, I think, thoughts for the two spots.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
Sounds reasonable. How's everybody else feel about that? Okay?
So, take, okay. So, you want to make four motions?
No, you can just do a big one.
Okay.
No, Carly said no.
So, take a motion.
All right, let me make sure I get all the names. So, I'd like to make a motion to nominate, let's see, Ed Orr and Jacob Salone for the 71 Sandy Pond Working Group.
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye.
And, yes, and then, yeah, I guess I was supposed to do it all together, but, and then, I'd like to make a motion to nominate.
He's mad at you now.
Nominate Alex Hack and Michelle Riggs as alternates to the 71 Sandy Pond, 71 Sandy Pond Road Working Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
All right, I apologize for the extra work.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
All right.
Thanks for inviting us, thanks.
Um, next is the Parks Department. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you guys? Um, so the only thing that I really wanted to present to you guys is we have a change order for the playground from Stella, the change order for $35,930, and the reason for it is when we first installed the chain link fences as a commission, we agreed that it was too far down, that could have caused some safety concerns for children, so we needed them to move the fence up, just to close it off a little bit more with our maintenance gate, so we have three doors, and then we also decided that we wanted recycling bins and trash cans in the playground as well, just to make it more clean, so we also asked them to pour concrete pads for those benches and trash receptacles, so everything is safe and ready to go.
Everything looked pretty straightforward in the packet, so.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Resented well.
Nope. And it would be by, with signature by the chair.
Yep.
All right.
So, no questions, I'll take a motion on it?
The amount is the $35,930? Okay. So I'll make a motion that change order number one for Stella Construction Company, LLC, for Kitty Junction Playground Approvements, reapproved in the amount of $35,930 with signature by the chair.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye.
It's approved.
And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on the second item on the update in the proposal for the Assistant Parks Director position with Ms. Ernst here, we just wanted to give a brief update to the select board, as the board was aware, the original plan and proposal was to create an Assistant Parks Director position, and the Parks Commission and the Parks Director, in looking at it, the challenge was, we want to start the position sooner than later, so that that person can get onboard and trained during the busy season of the Parks Department. Now, the proposal, the whole time, was contingent upon the town's free cash being certified, because the proposal, which we don't do that often, but have done, was to put before town meeting consideration for funding for this position, so that it could start sooner. We have since been informed by the Department of Revenue that our free cash will not be certified by the fall town meeting, and that's not entirely unusual, some years that happens, it's no reflection on the town or the department. So, where we stand on the update with the plan on the position is the job description has been developed, the position has been classified at a grade nine, step one through three, and working with the finance manager, the town accountant, the Parks Director, myself, there is some funding under the Parks revolving account, the Parks Department revolving account, that would allow an opportunity for the position to start sooner. That's the prerogative of the Parks Commission, which is gonna be meeting to discuss that, they were originally, we had hoped to meet before this meeting, but there was an issue with quorum. If that's the case, they would start the funding for the position, but the position will also be in the FY '26 budget that we're about to develop, you know, for full funding moving forward. There is funding that the position could start, if the commission would like to, with their funding, as of December 1st, to get the position going through the busy time and through the spring, and we'll keep you updated on that, no action by the board is required, and of course, you and the FinCom, and through the budget process, will see the whole, you know, position as part of the, part of the budget. So there is no article for funding for this position when we get to the warrant article, and we just wanted to give that update and keep you updated as we move forward.
Because we meet tomorrow night.
Commission meets tomorrow night, so more to come.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Next up, we have the Department of Public Works report. Hello, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening, how was Pearl Jam?
Oh, you heard of them? Awesome, I appreciate you, Matt. Sticking it up for me. Yeah, so should we quit?
You ditched us for Pearl Jam.
I got tickets months ago, I didn't think about it. Yeah, just one item tonight, should be an easy one. So, the Shaker Pond Road, that's the Shaker Mill Pond subdivision, is going for street acceptance at fall town meeting, so the planning board did vote at their last meeting to recommend the select board vote to lay out Shaker Pond Road as a townway, and continue the process for street acceptance. So in the packet is an order of layout that was prepared by town council, and which would be, is the request tonight is for the select board, it will be signature by the board to, to sign the order of layout of Shaker Pond Road, and then that would get filed with the town clerk, and then it would move to the town meeting vote after that, through the warrant, and then subsequent to town meeting, if it does get authorized for acquisition, then the select board would acquire Shaker Pond Road within 120 days of town meeting, so it's pretty standard to our, our street acceptances. The developer has completed the punch list we've created for him, so I don't see any reasons for, for not doing this, so.
Any questions?
No, it's pretty standard.
Yeah. All right.
So, I'll make a motion that the select board execute the order of layout of Shaker Pond Road as a public way.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The chair says aye. All right, that's it tonight?
That's it.
All right. Easy. Thanks, Dan.
Just one thing to bring up, so it was brought up, maybe a meeting or two ago, about the streetlight that's at Adams Street over here, by the Shoba Club?
Yes.
The one that's, no one owns?
No one owns.
Evidently?
We own that one. The one, the one on the pole over at Adams Street, the corner, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's across from, I'm trying to think of.
Adams and Central?
Yeah, not at the, yeah, I guess that's, but at the parking lot of Nishoba. So not right up in the corner.
Oh, okay.
Further back.
All right.
And I've gone and looked at it, and it is aimed a very odd way.
Okay.
And it's, you know, brought up by Ms. Conley that, that intersection there, that crosswalk is very dark. And I drive it all the time, and I, I do kind of agree. So I was just curious on, first of all, who owns that light?
If it's not the Cobra headlight on the street on the pole, then I would have to look, and it wouldn't be us. So technically, usually it's the private property owner. Sometimes they'll have those, like Torrico Tractor has some that point at their facility, and they own those, even though, and they pay National Grid for their fees. So it's probably what it is, but I'd have to look. So that'd be the ownership there.
Okay. Because, yeah, one of the thoughts was if it could just be turned, you know, because it's, it's not doing any good right now, but, you know, who would own it?
And I did, I did learn that, you know, Pauline did bring this up at that last meeting. So I did reach out to her. We're gonna look at that crosswalk again.
Okay.
And, and I know she had some suggestions on lighting and reflectors on the signs and things like that. So we haven't.
It is a dark road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. So, I mean, we've already tried turning that Cobra headlight to give more light in that intersection of Central and Adams, but we'll take another look. Yeah.
Pauline?
Well, it's hard to find that on mute button. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chris, for bringing this up. Dan, that light is not owned by any of the three businesses that circulate it, not by Markham, and not by TAG, and not by Nishoba. So hopefully, if it doesn't, if moving it or turning it doesn't do anything, maybe it can just be moved to the intersection. But I'll just leave that with you to figure it out. I, nobody seems to know who owns it. My guess, it's been there for well over 30 years.
Okay. Just real quick, how do you know no one owns it? You checked in with all of them? Just so I know if I'm gonna look into this.
Well, I work at one of the companies, and I know the owners of the other two companies. And yes, I've asked them all.
Okay.
They are not being built. And I can assure you, my company is not being built. So nobody seems to know who owns it.
Sturdy light.
A legacy light.
It's a legacy light.
I always paid for it, but not as. And I've lived here 35 years, and it's been there since before me. So I don't know what to tell you. But it's a great light. It sheds light like way more than the lamp that's on the pole. So hopefully, something will come of it. I just want to share that with you. I, I, you know, I'm sorry to be such a nudge about this, but it is really dangerous out there, really.
It is a dark road.
Thanks, Pauline.
All jokes aside, it is a very dark road.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda, the finance manager, the vote for useful life of ambulance for borrowing. Hello, good evening.
Hello.
What you got for us today?
All right. So in the, on the April 22nd, 2024 Annual Town Meeting, Article 11 authorized me, the treasurer, to borrow $550,000 to purchase a new ambulance. When we get authorized to borrow, there's a legal list of requirements I need to complete in order to proceed with borrowing in the future. So this particular item, the ambulance falls under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, which stipulates if the useful life is determined to be longer than five years, and I'm gonna borrow for more than five years, the select board must vote on the duration of that useful life. The fin, I consulted with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, and the recommendation is the useful life of the ambulance to be 10 years. So I'm here today to ask that the board vote to approve a 10-year useful life on the ambulance.
Questions?
I just have one question. In the packet, it says enclosed is the voting certificate. Where's the voting certificate?
So I did bring it with me.
Okay.
I did notice it wasn't on the packet. I apologize for that.
And it's a signature.
So it's just a clerk of the board's signature.
Okay.
And then it's blank like that, because then I'll have it notarized by the town clerk.
Sure.
So it fills in the bottom part of the memo.
So it starts off saying, I, the clerk.
That's you.
Uh-huh. So since it was in the packet, do you want me to read this?
Is it necessary?
No.
No, I think you can make a motion.
Okay.
The motion to, for the useful life of 10 years for signature by the clerk.
Okay.
So moved.
So, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
It says October 1st. Okay. October 1, 24. Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
Up is our review and approval of the 2024 Special Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in your packet the draft special 2024 Fall Special Town Meeting Warrant for October 28th of 2024, as also reviewed by town council. As I put in the memo, the cover memo, asking the board to review and approve the warrant this evening. Upon your approval, the warrant will be physically posted and officially posted by this Friday on the town's website, as well as various physical locations throughout town. It'll also be sent to printing and to the mailing process, and will be mailed to all heir households in advance of town meeting on October 28th. In the packet, the special annual fall town meeting warrant, there are 10 articles. There were no citizens' petitions filed by the deadline set by the board of Friday, September 27th at 1:00 PM. On each of the articles, I also want to point out upon approval of the board, we will be doing a lot of the outreach as we do every town meeting. We'll be doing articles of the day, where we'll feature a synopsis of each article leading up to town meeting. We will be activating the town meeting webpage on the town's website for this, where all of the supporting documents for each of the articles will be available for the public. Also, materials available on file from the town clerk. So I'll just very briefly just go through each article, not in great detail, but just for the record, if there are questions, Mr. Chair from the board or so forth, we'd be happy to answer those. Article one, the adoption of general law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, which is called the prudent investor rule, is being put forth by the finance manager, is also being recommended by town council as a best investment practice. If this statute is adopted by town meeting, it allows a broader range of investment opportunities for the town's various trust funds and so forth. Does their potentially risk come with that? Yes, but that's why we have both the commissioner of trust funds and the professional finance manager to handle that with bond counsel. Article two, which is, shouldn't, we have from time to time, is to rescind unissued borrowing balances. These are previous projects that were borrowed for that have been completed, and that in often cases have an unissued balance, asking town meeting to rescind those to clean up the town's borrowing schedule there. And we've had this type of article from time to time. I also should point out that the finance committee met last week and did vote to recommend Articles 1 through 4, which are financial articles with financial impact. Article 3 and Article 4, and the board was, been given an update, a presentation on this as at various boards and committees. Article 3 is the creation of the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund. There will, of course, be a presentation at town meeting on this. There is a page on the town website with all of the supporting information that has gone into this over the last almost year. And then the second article, which is related to that, is the Stormwater Utility Fee Collections, Abatements, and Leans. So Article 3 would create the enterprise fund. Article 4 would allow the town, through the select board, to issue abatements, fees, and leans. And per the statute, they have to be two separate articles. Then the board was briefed previously by the town planner, and a public hearing was held by the planning board on the next four articles, which are zoning bylaw amendment articles. Article 5 is the adoption of the MBTA Multifamily Overlay District, which we've been advised that all towns are expected to adopt by the end of the calendar year per state law. Again, the board was given a presentation on that. There will be a brief presentation at town meeting. And the town planner's done an excellent job with all of the supporting materials for this. Article 6 is the zoning bylaw amendment for the inclusionary housing. This has been the efforts of the, the work group. Again, the planning board held a public hearing on that and is also voted to recommend with the presentation at town meeting. Article 7 is a zoning bylaw amendment for some definitions, specifically modification to the definition of affordable housing and adding the definition of heir affordable housing trust, sort of a mechanical article that's needed based on the other two. Article 8 is a zoning amendment to update the town's zoning map. So assuming that the MBTA article passes, those zones have to be shown on the zoning map, and that's what Article 8 would do. The map is available on the town website and on file with the town clerk. Article 9, what the board talked about tonight and took some action on, is the street acceptance for Shaker Pond Road. And then Article 10 is a home rule petition, an act relative to disability pension and critical incident stress management for violent crimes. It's being put forth by the chief of police, who is here to answer any questions that the board may have. The explanatory note in the article, I think, is well done to explain what it does, but it is seeking a home rule petition. If, if it passes town meeting, it authorizes the select board to petition the general court, the legislature, to adopt this for a accidental disability retirement for one of our sergeants that was severely injured in the line of duty. And if there's questions for the board, I know that the police chief is here. So those are the, the 10 articles. They have been reviewed by town council. And again, be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair, that the board may have, and then ultimately looking for the board to approve.
Any questions?
Question about Article 8. I think that it'd be my recommendation to add a note on the explanatory note indicating that, you know, Article 8 is contingent upon Article, whatever article number that was
Okay.
being approved.
Yep.
Otherwise, people might, you know.
It'll get approved. Everything will get approved.
Right, but it is.
But, you know, on the off chance, and then they would know right away, you know, you'd know right away that if the other article didn't pass, like, just skip over Article 8, you know? Correct. So Article 8 is contingent on the passage of Article 5.
Okay.
I'll put that in the note.
Other than that, I have, I have no questions.
No? I don't either.
Nope.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion that the special town meeting for October 28th warrant be approved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Moving on.
All right.
Now, your managers report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, in the interest of time, I know we're running behind on the administrative update. We've been largely focused on preparations for town meeting, the beginning of the budget process, as well as the hospital issues, which we'll talk about momentarily. So unless there's any administrative questions from the board, and you have the warrants in the packet since the board last met, we'll write into the action items.
Any questions?
So the first was, I, for the, the amended on appointments, so per amended to the agenda. So I do have one recommendation on an appointment for the rate review committee. The rate review committee met this afternoon. There is, there's been one resident vacancy for quite some time on that committee. The FinCom selected Mr. Bob France as their representative. But Mr. Kurt Friskowski has not only attended all of the meetings, but has well briefed on the rates as we're developing them in the rate process. So the committee wanted to recommend that he serve as a resident member until June 30th of 2025, so for the balance of this rate process. And then when we do the annual appointments, we'll visit it there. So on behalf of the rate review committee, which did take a motion to that effect, but the board is the appointing authority, I would respectfully recommend that the board appoint Mr. Kurt Friskowski as the resident, as a resident rep to rate review for a term that expires June 30th, 2025.
Basically formally recognizes his contribution to the community, you know?
Yes.
So.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope. Then I make a motion to appoint Kurt Friskowski to the rate review committee with the term ending June 30th, 2025.
Yes. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
The second, the second amended item under appointments, Mr. Chair, has to do with the modification of the 71 Sandy Pond Road Work Group. When the work group was put together, it was an oversight. The conservation agent is on there, but there should be a conservation commissioner on there, just like the town plan is on there. So I'm just respectfully asking that the board just take a vote to modify the working group to add a conservation commissioner, which they'll select.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right.
The next item in the packet is the, the FY 2026 Town Budget Calendar, and of, which we've been talking about for some time. And I didn't know if there were any other questions. Obviously, we will be populating it with the by-board rate review and capital planning committees as they get, you know, up and going. We will, we will put their times in the calendar. But as people who have been involved and know, and just for the public's benefit, all three of those committees basically are meeting every month from now and leading up to town meeting. The only other thing which we'll talk about later that I had highlighted in yellow is the rate review committee is, has been discussing, they haven't taken a formal vote yet. They meet on October 15th again. But doing the transfer station, public hearing for the rates for the transfer station for the first meeting in November, which we've gotta iron out tonight because of the election.
Is, sorry, is it a typo in, under September where it says calendar year 2024?
No.
Yes. Oh, it should be, yes, it should be calendar year 2025. Yep. Yep. So I think we're in pretty good shape on the budget calendar. I didn't know if there were any questions from the board, if you wanted to finalize it, or if there's anything I can answer on that.
Hi.
No.
That was my only question. All right. So you want a motion to finalize it?
Please.
Okay.
Oh, you want a motion for the budget calendar?
Yeah.
Oh, it does say review and approval.
Then I make a motion to approve the fiscal, fiscal year 2026 budget calendar.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. In March, it's also, there's a typo.
Okay.
Couple of them.
Oh, yeah.
Just that, just the. Couple of them, just the date.
Got it. Okay. The next item is the Neshoba Valley Medical Center updated. Mr. Chair, ask if there is an objection out of Fire Chief. Just join me at the table. So a couple of things on the update. So as the Board is aware as of last Friday, the Governor has created three working groups in the state to look at the issues that have been created by the closure of these hospitals, and she has put together a Neshoba group, working group, to look at all of the issues. And she asked me to co-chair that working group along with the Assistant Secretary for Health and Human Services. I also want to mention that Chief Johnston, it will also be on the working group with his expertise in emergency response. The working group is getting off of the ground. Once it gets off of the ground, I will give regular updates, not only to this Board but to the public, because that is very important. I have, and there's a lot of support on the working group on this front, there are three, not to oversimplify it, but there are three immediate fundamental issues as we see them. The first is the future of the hospital and the facility. So what do we, we have to continue the efforts to restore the Neshoba Valley Medical Center, the future of the facility and the hospital, because if it hadn't closed, we wouldn't be in this position. The second issue is the emergency medical response, meaning right now, which I'll have the Chief speak to in a minute, right now, there are immediate impacts and concerns we're seeing now as far as transport times, as far as a bottleneck that is beginning to form at UMass Leominster, and other concerns. And so the emergency medical response, there are two pieces to it. One is immediately, what do we need to do in this unfortunate and new landscape? But also, what is the long-term plan? Because as this Board knows, and we have made this very clear publicly, that none of the towns out here have the financial resources to sustain this, and it's going to require efforts from the state and the federal government. And we'll talk about one first grant that we've become aware of, but we've made it clear that that's just the beginning. And then the third area is access and equity, to use the state, the DPH's terms on this. So right now, the access to healthcare has been devastated out here. You talk to any doctor, I'm sure, maybe even your own doctors and so forth, they can't even get referrals for people. People have lost their primary care doctors. They've gotten new doctors only to find out that they're not in their insurance. It's a huge mess, and it's only started. And so we have to address the improved access to healthcare out here, as well as the equity to it, because we've lost our only hospital. The other piece to it is the physical access. The COA Director, not just in Air, but the other COA Directors, we're already seeing the need for more transportation resources to get seniors to their appointments. It used to be great when it could just go to Neshoba. Now it's tying up vans to further distances. And I have, we repeatedly have said to the state, but it's no mystery to anybody out here, we don't have mass public transportation out here like they do for Carney or some of the other hospitals. It's a unique issue there, and it has been suggested that the Massachusetts Department of Transportation get involved with this working group to talk about the issue of transportation. So the working group is just getting off the ground. It needs to be successful. That's why some of us are there. We're not there just to be there. And these are the three major issues, and we'll have more information definitely by your next meeting on the specifics. The second thing, I just have four things under the report. The second thing is the Select Board's letter to the Governor remains with no response, which is concerning. And this will be the third letter in invitation from this Board that hasn't even been responded to, even in a form letter format. We know it's been received, but there's been no response. Just so you know, I've checked as far as all of the other 15 towns, nobody else has received any formal response. In fact, the Chair of the Groton Select Board contacted me on Friday and was just very concerned that there has been no response. So respectfully, I think that the Board should consider, and we get tired of these letters, but we have to keep it going. I think the Board should consider a third letter and an invite. One of the themes could be, we just passed the one-month mark on closure, and there's been silence, with the exception of this creation of this working group, but it's been a month that your offer, the invitation for her to come out here to meet and to discuss the future and the local partnership, and just so you know, the other towns are supportive of that. They understand she should come to Air, that's where the hospital is. And once we get a response to that invitation, then we can begin to structure it. But we still haven't been asked by the state formally what the local towns are willing to do to solve this problem. And then, I think, reemphasizing the importance of the site, not only to the town of Air, but to the region, and also the economic piece of it. So again, as the Board has done previous, I'd recommend that the Board consider authorizing a third letter and invitation, do up a draft, have each of you weigh in, stronger, firmer language, perhaps than me at times, and we get that out there. We have to just keep at it.
I 1,000% agree.
Yes.
And I want it as stern as possible, because at this point, I mean, rude does not even cover it.
Right.
You know, she's been at the biggie. She's been on a horse. I think she's had more ice cream. Seriously, light off the ice cream, honey. She was out at celebrating the hospitals that have, you know, been saved, which I wholeheartedly agree. But I don't think she understands that you're not just supposed to be there for the happy times. You're supposed to be here when things are bad. Now, we've sent help down to the Carolinas, I wholeheartedly agree. That's great. Our Governor has sent help down to the Carolinas. Great. Do you know that they might, you know, have to go through this area to get down there, you know? Why are you ignoring us? This is, I don't know who her PR team is, but she needs to fire them, because they are given really bad advice. Because to ignore this, to not respond, it's my understanding that Secretary Walsh, is that the person, was rude to Robert? No. No. Not going to happen. Not going to happen. So it just, this whole thing is just, oh, don't get me started.
Yeah. So yes, the third letter, please.
So we will prepare a third letter for your input and to get that out. The last two items which sort of go together, Mr. Chair, and which I asked the Fire Chief to join us, is there is an initial grant opportunity that's out there that the Chief has been proactive on and wants to just share some initial thoughts as to what our plan for this grant is. It's about 200,000 to 250,000. And then the second thing I'd like the Chief to speak to, his memo that he put in your packet, and just some of the data, some of the initial impacts that he and his department are seeing, and then any questions from the Board, so.
Yeah, I can just give you, Mr. Chair, I can give you like three or four bullets off the memo. I'm sure you already saw it. It's no different than what we spoke at a public forums. We knew the transport times would be long. We're seeing the ambulances gone. You know, it's an hour and a half, sometimes up to two hours. Sometimes they're passing each other on Route 2, you know, things like that. But that's what we expected. The problem is, a lot of the times now, like those ambulance calls are taking an hour and a half per ambulance, so you're passing each other. There's an issue with station coverage at times. We don't know who's back, how many people. And the important thing to remember is, we always cross staff, so ambulance and fire truck decide by side whatever call comes in first, you know, is what they go on. So the numbers are the same. The career staff's an issue. At the same time, we talked about wall times. What wall times is when you arrive to the hospital. I can tell you, last Friday, real busy day, they had 14 runs, and they got to the ER in Emerson, and there were 48 people in the waiting room. So this is what we're up against. Sometimes our patients go into the waiting room, depending on what the triage nurse says. So it's not just EMS, it's when you get to the hospital. So, and I think we're all, we understand that fact. You know, it's a larger issue than just Air. Both the hospitals are busy. And I also put in your packet there, just everyone's always wondering where we transport to. And as you saw in the packet, it tends to be 67% just in that first month. We're going to Leominster. The majority after that were Emerson, then when they had trickled, depending on where they needed to go. You know, we've been to Clinton occasionally. We've been there, I think, three times now. We've gone to St. Joe's, we've gone to Lowell, we've gone to UMass. You know, it all depends what specialty care they need too. And like I said, we've certainly, I think the department members have met the challenge, and I think we've bent really far back. And I think I told you, I'm like, we just haven't broke, because at times, it's like, there's nobody left, you know? And I'll end it with, we've been fortunate enough. We had two fires the week before last. They were in the middle of the night. So in both fires, all members went to station, so they got to go on the first responding truck. It's just a roulette game that we'll play, you know? And this is across the region too, not just Air thing. You know, it's all the members that were involved. As for the grant, actually, I talked to the Town Manager yesterday, and later that afternoon, the DPH official did call me to say that each of the, I think it's eight towns are going to get a check for $250, is the way they put it. Of course, it's like the stay will stay tuned. And then there'll be certain rules, I guess, when you get your $250. And I know it's based on equipment and training. It's not for labor cost by any stretch. But we certainly have a plan. We have, my old chief's car is a Class 5 ambulance now. So what that means is, when one of the ambulances, say, is broken, we put all the paramedic equipment on that ambulance. So if we have an ALS call out of town, we send that first. We still have an ambulance back. So our idea is to buy another car, have paramedic equipment on it all the time. So that just gives us a third option. Like, if it goes ALS to Shirley, let's say, we send the paramedics. We still have two ambulances back. And I think it, less wear and tear on a half a million dollar ambulance. So that's our initial thoughts on that. We'll see how that goes in the timeframe for the $250. Any questions? Be happy to answer them.
I don't have any.
What determines where patients are sent? Because, you know, for the different ERs?
Yep. So one, it can be a patient's request, and two, it can be determined what their illness is. For instance, if they're having a STEMI, Emerson and Leominster do not, meaning a heart attack, they do not accept STEMI. So they would either go to Worcester or Lowell General. For trauma, for instance, you go to Leahy or Worcester or UMass.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I also see there's just a thing that says null.
Yeah, those are just, yeah, we can't correct that for some reason. That means mutual aid we received in. So four times we had to have mutual aid. Just yesterday, we had it twice. It was a real busy day. So, yeah, we can't seem to get that to put mutually. But it's a great question. We saw that, yep. So that's how many times someone else came, they had to transport a patient.
Yeah, this is great. As I had mentioned the past, more numbers and things like that. You just saying, you know, going to Emerson, there's 48 people there, you know?
Yeah, that just happens to me, because I talk to the crews all the time.
Yeah.
Like, when they get back, you know, they'll just, you know, it's crazy. They waited 25 minutes, you know? So we hear this all the time. So, yeah, it's a constant, you know?
Well, that's good to actually put real numbers, because, you know, in my head, you know, it was going to be bad. But now I picture, you know, I have that in my head now. You get to emergency room, there's 48 people there, you know? In my mind, in a perfect world, right? You get right off, you go in, you get treated, and all that. And now I'm just thinking like, 48 people. Oh, you know, and that's what's happening here. So this is great.
Yep. And like I said, be happy to come back whenever you want, and we'll keep everybody informed as, you know, the grant moves forward. And like I said, I can see staffing becoming an issue, and I express some concerns to the Town Manager, like they're constant, it's like nonstop. Certainly there's slow days, you know, quieter days, I guess, but it's like when they're gone, like, you put eight or 10 ambulance calls, I mean, it's like 16 hours, you know what I mean? They're, you know, because when you get back, they still got to do their PCR, you know, if they're not doing it while they're driving, so, not driving, riding. Sometimes they're on the tablet typing, you know, and then they often take calls, like, I've heard them coming in from Harvard or Leominster, they're always taking the next call. So, yeah, it's challenging.
Yeah. And the things that, you know, have to get pushed off, or, I just mentioned, you know, training.
Yeah, it's great.
You know, like, that's important. You need to have that time for training, and that's going to be one of the first things that get cut, understandably, but it's like, but we need that, you know, so.
Yeah, it's a great point. You used to have a little bit more time that day, you'd squeeze that training in, but it's getting to be where you barely have enough time to sneak a meal in, rather than just training, perhaps, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just add one?
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work. And on that grant, you mentioned that they were giving up $250 for all the towns.
Yeah.
Maybe bounce back to them that since the hospital was located here, we were, you could probably come to think of a lot of different reasons, that we should maybe get $500,000. We should get a bigger piece of that.
And we can certainly work to that effect, yeah.
Throw that right back to them.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chair, so more to come, and we will continue to keep the Board and the town updated.
All right.
Item number four, just briefly. Dr. Renda, the Superintendent of Schools, contacted me recently. The teachers' contract is going to be up for negotiation this year at the Air Shirley Regional School District. And he's putting forth a proposal and a plan where he would like to have a member of the Select Board from each town, Air and Shirley, on his negotiating team. He feels that it would be important where it's one of the largest expenditures of the district. It would be a good opportunity, a good bridge between the town and the district during that process. And so I wanted to get this on the agenda for the Board to be thinking, that the Board should consider selecting someone. I'm waiting for his, you know, formal letter, which hasn't come yet, on it. So that's sort of number four. I think it's out-of-the-box thinking, and it could be beneficial.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's out-of-the-box thinking, but I, and I'm just throwing this out here for discussion, because, you know, the teachers used to fall under the town.
Right before we regionalized, yep.
Right. And then they don't fall under the town. So I'm wondering if we might be crossing a line. Again, I'm bringing this up for conversation, because when I saw this, I was like, wait a minute, this is new. When have we ever done that before? And I'm just wondering if we're now crossing back into a line. I mean, I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad idea, but I'm just, I'm just a little concerned, because, yeah, we pay them in a way, but we don't pay them. You know what I'm saying? We do it in a roundabout way. So I just, again, I just, I'm just, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about it. So I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, no, I get it. When I saw it, I was thinking, you know, kind of like, I can see how the town might want to have someone just kind of in there to observe, think about things, because, yeah, ultimately, the money comes from the town. So that's what I'm thinking, that that was the thought process, but I didn't think of it that way.
Yeah, because, I mean, they got removed from us, you know? Because even, that was even with the pensions. Wasn't that, yeah, pretty sure. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that, you know, because we used to have that, and then...
Oh, correct. They have their own...
You know, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're inadvertently stepping back into something that might, I'm just saying caution right at the moment, you know? I'm going to say it's a bad idea, but...
Yeah. Well, that's why I wanted to get it, at least get the Board thinking about it. Like I said, I'm still waiting for his letter, which I anticipate his proposal will come before your next meeting. But the Board should consider it.
Why all of a sudden? I mean, if we were never a part of it before, why now?
Maybe just...
To me, it just, well, it just, it sends off alarms, you know, which alarms can just be, you know, woo-hoo, caution, wait a minute. So I just...
Yeah. I think, I mean, so the function of a Board member there... Yeah, I think, I mean, so the function of a board member there, correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, being more observational, right? I mean, you're not going to be doing anything formally.
Well, I don't know, because it's saying it wants us on to be a part of the teachers' contract negotiations.
So.
You know, so we're, we're kind of getting into a lane that, you know?
You're right.
We've never been in before, and I'm not sure if we should be.
Yeah, if it's more just observation kind of thing, then I think that's probably beneficial, because the more information that a board has, the better. But I agree, I don't, I could be agreeing.
Can you ask him?
Yeah.
Before he sends you the formal letter to kind of outline exactly what the expectation is?
Yes.
I mean, does he have members of the school committee on it? I mean, don't you think the member, the, the negotiation people should be on the school committee? Not us?
Yeah, I think he, the question is, if he, is he looking for observation folks from the town? Let me find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I just, I don't think.
Right, no.
I, I just don't think we should be a part of it, because we don't oversee anything like that.
That I agree.
You know, we don't get the financials on that or anything like that. That's something that the school committee did. And I just think we're stepping into a lane that, that could cause an issue.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll ask him to clarify, and I had hoped by now that it's not a criticism to have the formal proposal. I know that it's something that the board would want to discuss as you're doing tonight and to consider.
Yeah. I think, yeah, definitely understanding more what the expectation is.
Yeah, I agree. If it's a, you know, an actual active person, then I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay. More to come. Two last items real quick. You have in your packet a request for a one-day beer and wine license for St. Mary's Parish, 31 Shirley Street, for their October 26th, Saturday, October 26th, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, for their Polish dinner social. I'll be looking for approval by the board.
Free standard.
Yeah.
Every year we do.
Going to say it's an annual thing, and there's been no issues in the past.
No issues.
Enough by me. Okay.
Is this again, the 26th?
26th.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the one-day liquor license for use in the parish hall at St. Mary's Church on Saturday, October 26th, from 4:00 PM until 9:00 PM.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye.
All right, and Mr. Chair, members of the board last. The November meeting schedule, as the boards are aware, there is the presidential election on Tuesday, November 5th, which would normally be when the Select Board met at 6:00 PM. But per the Secretary of State, they don't want any public meetings in any polling place during voting. So the board respectfully need to select an alternate date for the first meeting in November. Just to start the discussion, it was proposed you could do Monday, November 4th, at 6:00 PM. There's also Wednesday, November 6th. That would be at 5:00 PM. We'd have to do it a little earlier, because there's a previously booked meeting at 7:00 that night with a public hearing. That's sort of what we did, I think, for the primary, or date of the board's choosing. But I, we will definitely need the two meetings in November.
I'm good on both dates, but I think that the, the 4th at 6:00 PM would be best.
It's my wife's birthday, but I'm sure she'll.
Will she forgive us? Should we send you home with some cake for her?
I'll blame Sean.
Okay.
No, that, that should work. All right.
We could also, just sorry, Mr. Chair, we could also do five on that day, too. I meant to put five or six, but it, it doesn't matter either way. I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think six would be good, because that's when our, our standard time is.
Yeah.
So this should be fine.
All right, so 6:00 PM on Monday, the 4th.
The 4th, okay, good. Mr. Chair, that completes my report. Thank you, and the board.
All right, thank you. No new business or Select Board member questions this evening? Approval of meeting minutes from September 17th. Do not see any.
I did not see any issues.
Yeah, no funny typos. I was disappointed.
Getting batteries in the keyboard.
So I'll make a motion that the meeting minutes from September 17th, 2024, be approved as submitted.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye, and they're approved.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.